Navigation district meeting will open up with the pledge of allegiance. It says, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag."
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I gotta tell ya, that pledge of allegiance just meant a lot more to me this time. Hope y'all be able to say it.
I'm sorry, what? Yeah, I'm recovered. My husband's recovered.
We have a section for citizens to be heard. I don't have any sheets, okay? Press question thrown in, has a tradition, no press. What we're gonna do is go into a closed session and then come out and... We were gonna bring David in first.
I think you're gonna... You were talking about bringing him on first and just do that.
Yeah, he's got some time limitations. So I tell you what, let's put the closed meeting and we'll just have the closed meeting in the middle of the agenda item, is that okay? Okay, so we'll start off with the agenda item number four, deliberation on issues and possible actions related to stormwater drainage into waters within the ACND jurisdictions, including but not limited to permits for discharge permitting fees rate analysis and potential agreements with the Aransas County, City of Rockport and other entities regarding stormwater drainage and structures. And there's Mr. Bamos right on time.
Oh, nice.
What we have asked him to do is go through his information that was collected way back while we were doing all of our informational studies and come up with a rate study for Little Bay because it looks like there's some changes and we really need to set forth that rate study and figure out how we're gonna use it to make sure that things get done correctly. So, Mr. Bamos, what you got for us?
Are you all ready for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Can you...
Uh, shall I share my screen? I finished showing some pages from the study I distributed.
One second, David, we're gonna just start our...
What, yeah.
...our audio.
Okay.
Could you try skipping now?
Yeah, so, does this sound any better?
Why not?
Thank you.
Okay. So, shall I share my screen? I can kinda show some of the pages from the study I distributed.
Yes, sir, I think I would be best.
Okay. So, to start with, let's skip over the introduction part. To start with, I identified eight outfalls from the various water sheds and outfalls in Little Bay that are shown here, labeled outfalls one through eight. Outfall eight being two a ditch, and then each of their outfalls are various storm sewer systems with discharges into the bay. They're summarized in the table here, the description of the location, the description of the outfall, the size of the watershed in terms of acres, the largest one being two a ditch, two a creek, with twenty-one hundred acres, the others being smaller than that, of course. And then the drainage area ID corresponds to the city's, City of Rockport's master drainage plan, how they identify each of these water sheds. So just, just to be clear that all of this information in terms of watershed size and outfall information came from the city's master drainage plan.
David, can you blow that up just a little bit? It's there.
The table?
Yeah.
We have it here.
Oh, we do have it?
Yeah, yeah. It's in this...
Never mind, rock and roll.
We've got pages like this.
Yep. Got it.
Okay. We good?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
All right. So, moving on to the cost of service, this follows the same format and line of thinking as the, uh, the study done for Rockport Harbor. So using the historic sediment transport information that was developed for the Rockport Study, which equates to a rate of eight point one cubic yards per acre per year that is transported from the City of Rockport area, it being of uniform land use, uniform soil conditions, and so that rate was translated to this study. When you apply that eight point one cubic yards per acre per year for the overall two thousand eight hundred forty-seven acres that currently discharges into Little Bay, that equates to a little over twenty-three thousand cubic yards per year. Presuming that a dredge project every ten years, you don't wanna dredge every year, those projects would be too small and not economical. So every two years, every ten years, a dredge project to remove a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand cubic yards would result in a cost every ten years of six point nine million dollars. That's based on a unit cost of thirty dollars per cubic yard. Now, if you recall, in the Rockport Harbor study, that cost was sixty dollars per cubic yard. The reason why this cost, this cost for this study is less is two reasons. One is scale of project, so you get better pricing for a larger project of this size, but also because, let me go scroll back up here to the, um, to the overall map. The conditions of the dredge project are open water as opposed to the confinement of the harbor and working around structures that facilities, those kind of things. So it's an easier project and the cost would therefore be lower. So, so that's why the unit cost of thirty dollars per cubic yard was used as opposed to sixty in the Rockport Study. Adding is some of the one-time costs for a dredge project, including engineering, environmental permitting, annualizing that over a ten-year period for, for each year would be a cost of seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars per year. Dividing that up on a per-acre basis, so dividing that along the two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven acres, that results in a per-acre annual cost of two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars.
And it, is that non-permeable, non-permeable sort, um...
Surface.
Surfaces, thank you, factored into that, or is that the whole watershed?
That's the whole watershed.
Okay.
And the reason I did that is the level of development is, has roughly stayed the same. I'm not saying there hasn't been any development, there has, but the overall land use in the total pervious area over the past seventy years has, um, has changed, but not demonstrably so when compared to the watershed outfall that has outfall to Rockport Harbor over the past seventy years, and that was the basis of the sediment transport, so, of the sediment transport calculation. So what I mean by that is, the two-hundred-and-fifty-five acres that has drained in the Rockport Harbor, that level of development, the amount of pervious area, is essentially the same as the two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven acres that exist today.
Okay.
Okay. And the country club has pretty much real good sediment control because they cleaned all those ponds out and then maintained them and watched them, so that's being done, so that just kinda makes that flat.
David...
Just correct a little bit. The country club didn't clean those out, the city did.
They're maintained, yes.
They are maintained. Uh, David, I have a question. The, uh, under cost of service analysis, the third paragraph, you talked about transport and deposit, and I presume that's deposit of the material that's been dredged out. And, is that correct?
I'm sorry, somebody else was talking over the speaker, had trouble hearing your question.
Oh, yes, under your cost of service, under your cost of service analysis, your third pre- paragraph, you talk about the cost is dredge, transport and deposit, and I presume that is depositing all of that material that has been dredged off-site?
Yes, ma'am.
So...
Yes, I'll cite, estimate a transport distance of, of some over three to five miles.
Three to five miles. Is that a realistic distance, Keith?
We got lots of places for it. Well, that, that's according to what the needs are of the time.
Yeah.
Like when we dredge Rockport Harbor, you know, there was quite a bit of need for fill material, so it, it, it found homes. This particular dredge is according to the time of year and the quality of the material that is retrieved, of how marketable that dredge material might be, and that's, that's an unknown factor at this point.
I, I think I'll ask if David on, I mean, I can hear your comments. If he's, if he's gonna...
Did you hear that, David?
Not quite, it's a little bubbly.
Okay, just be good. I, I guess my, my point was, the quality of the, the dredge material will have a lot to do with who the customer may be for accepting it. If we have to take that to a dredge spoil site, if it's found to be contaminated or anything like that, that, that may drive the cost. And, um, three miles, that may be a very mild figure. That might just get it out of the city limits, so to speak.
But it's what I'm wondering...
Transportation of that dredge material is, is always costly.
Because as you and I saw down in that valley a couple of years, down in the valley a couple of years, a few years ago now, the dewatering was pretty extensive. I mean, that's a pretty elaborate pro... I don't know where we would have, I mean, it's not insurmountable, but it's gonna be costly, I would think.
Well, let's look at it like this, Keith, you have a lot of practical experience with this. How do you feel about those guidelines, let's call it?
Yeah, I think that's where we start.
Close.
Yeah. Um, we, it would also have to be a segmented dredge plan for the reason, you have so much material, we have so few places to de-water it. So we would have to stack the material, let it de-water to a point that it could be removed, and then start your next phase of dredging. It would have to definitely be a phased area because we don't have acres and acres and acres of area to stack it and let it de-water. So it, it may slow the process down, which also may drive the cost for, for the dredger because he would have to mobilize, allow it to de-water, re-mobilize and so forth.
And we also have to take into account that there's not much more room. That needs to be done today, the channels at least. I mean, it's, that's a fact.
Well, there's been a calculation that there's over two-hundred-thousand cubic yards of sediment sitting on the bottom of Little Bay, so we're already at the point that it, all those deltas have flushed out since we've had these tropical storms, and that sediment is pretty widespread across Little Bay's bottom as we speak.
Just to add to this point, when we conducted the rate study for Rockport Harbor, we contacted companies that currently do this in Rockport and that did it for a previous dredging project for Rockport Harbor. So a lot of the assumptions that we're taking in these rate analysis are factual information that we got from companies and current rates, so on so forth.
Right, right, right.
So all those points were taken into consideration when building this stuff up.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, what percentage of the land are you assuming is non-pervious or impervious cover?
So approximately seventy percent is pervious cover, approximately thirty percent is impervious.
Okay.
Do we know when, I'm sorry. Uh, do we know when the last dredging was performed on outfall eight and outfall five or anywhere near that?
I don't know that.
Yes.
Nineteen oh five?
We, our last dredge project in Little Bay was in the channels. In front of those outfalls, Mother Nature with the big flow of water running off the, the land pushed that stuff out. We didn't have to go back and dredge it. It was gone because it got spread out through the outflow pressures and volumes. As we had that big delta that went almost out to the channel there at, um, at Tulley, at the Tulley outfall, that, most of that sand got washed across towards Key Allegro Marina. So the sand didn't go away, even though you don't see it in, in the aerials, the sand didn't go away, it just got distributed across the bay bottom.
And what did happen is, as an example, going into that weather, we were going into a dredge project that was set from the bathometric surveys that there was the X amount of sediment. When they went in to do it, they found a lot more because of those big three annual giant rainfalls that did wash all that in, and they were only able to do half?
We had to readjust our dredge plan and profile to, I guess you'd say, take into the count the extended volume of what we were facing in those channels. That's correct.
What is the depth of Little Bay? The channel run T-basin?
It is, it, right now, it's, it's pretty shallow. It was permitted at six to eight feet. Now, um, I would say five in the deeper portions. We have some shallower areas. Uh, when I was a kid, I could walk across Little Bay, it would be over my head. Now, I probably won't get my chin whiskers wet if I wade across there, so we've lost a lot of depth.
And we have a solid study from, when was that, eighteen, twenty?
Something like that.
Um, that the county did on the flood project that we're gonna be looking at here, but we have fairly recent information on that.
Mr. General, I think my help will have some discussion perhaps with David Bamos and, you know, regarding how to factor in, when you're saying permanent fees, how to factor in the existing condition, which has already been left, where, and I hear, you don't have it under ten years before you need to dredge.
Mm-hmm.
And this study is assuming you're starting off in a big condition and building up enough funds to dredge ten years from now.
Well, here's what's going on on that front. We, we are close to money to get that done. We were doing a lot of work with it, we had a lot of cooperation from the funding entities to do it. We're just about completed a master plan that includes all of our harbors, Little Bay, Fulton, Rockport and Cove Harbors, um, that will give us a roadmap to get long-term funding to do these things, that Judy has uncovered some of that, been working with them on it, so, um, y'all throw in, yes, we need to do that, but it has to happen soon, and then we're gonna move forward if we can't get the sediment control that we need. Remember the ordinance that we have passed, if you do your best shot of eliminating the sediment, it's a non-point, it doesn't even matter. It's if you don't do what you need to do to stop that sediment, then that's when you incur fees. Right now, that's not going.
I, I don't think that's an accurate description of your order. And you can reduce your, the, the party producing the discharge, so reduce their fees, the amount, by the amount they moderated.
That's...
You're suggesting that the fee could go to totally a one?
Absolutely, would you like to...
You could reduce it, you could reduce it to zero.
That, that's the way I feel, man.
You set a, you set a rate, and based on the remedial actions, it may not go to zero, but theoretically it could go to zero. But with respect to your question on this, this is a hypothetical ten-year projection that's just getting to a cost of service number. Once you adopt the number, and that's on a ten-year cycle, all the assumptions that you're talking about here, once you adopt that rate, then you go apply it to the real world of, okay, Keith says, you all decide, we need to do a dredging thing in the next five years or what have you, but in the meantime, you've got a number that you start reserving against for planning purposes, and a number that you start, you know, if you decide so, charging the city for untreated, unremediated discharge. So that's, this is a theoretical projection, but it's an important projection that sets a cost of service you use going forward. We just did it with respect to, uh, Rockport Harbor, his estimate at the time, as I recall, was eight-hundred-and-forty per acre on the year.
Straight to eight hundred.
You adopted, you adopted eight hundred, you, you rounded down to eight hundred. So, you know, you're, you're about to get a rate here, and you'll have to weigh that whenever you decide to adopt the rate. But this is just to give you...
A baseline.
A baseline.
A baseline cost.
It really makes one of those observations. What you have here is, is a cost of dredging plan, and this doesn't address all of the other problems you have with respect to water quality. This doesn't address any damage from the materials or chemicals that are in the water. Taking out the, being in a trap and reducing the amount of sediment that comes into your harbor doesn't improve the quality of the water for the damage that the chemicals in that water or the other substances in the water may be doing to your environment. I just suggest another side of that.
Okay, can we go on?
Yeah. Everybody here?
I have, no, I have a question. First off, did we go into executive session or not?
No.
So this, this is being...
This is open, mate.
This is open.
Okay. One of the things that, that, that as I look at this chart, I don't know what the age of this photograph is, I understand statistical analysis, but what I see here, and I'd like to comment on it from the gentleman who's on the screen, is I see a delta at outfall eight, I see a little bit of a doubt, delta at outfall five, and then I see a delta over towards the Key Allegro side that obviously is less depth than what surrounds it. And that's why I asked when this was dredged, and I don't remember what the answer was, or if it was answered. Uh, did you say something?
I think oh-four, oh-five?
Okay, oh-four, oh-five. So in twenty years, this deltas that we see here, don't see anything on one, two, three, four, six, seven, seems to me like we're blowing it significantly out of proportion to what the photograph shows.
Charlie, would you like to address that?
I'm not sure what's...
He's saying there's no sediment...
No, I didn't say...
...after when we did it, or he doesn't see it.
I see, I see sediment deltas, two locations that the city has control of, responsibility for, and that would be five and eight. Then there's a delta off of the west side of Key Allegro would be one, two, three.
Well, it's not a delta, that's just sand, man.
Well, it's, it's a shallower portion of, so therefore, yes...
Jack, what, what I was trying to explain a while ago, those deltas come and go with the amount of flow that comes out the discharge. We could have a bit, like in this very picture, that was probably a pre-Harvey picture. You see the size of the delta on the north end. Uh, now you go out there, you could walk, there was birds ankle-wading out there across that delta, that's how shallow it got. Now you go out there today, that delta has pretty much been dispersed out into the, the bay. That delta is, uh, as far as the look of that picture is gone.
It's in the channels.
But the sand didn't go away. It just got moved.
Keith, why would we bring a photograph, pre-Harvey, to show what the delta is?
Guess to prove what, what's really happening.
What was? What was?
That it, Jack, hold on, that's not what the photograph is for. The photograph is to show where those outfalls are. That's it, period. And the, and then...
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the land is accreting behind the oyster reefs, isn't that true? Didn't our study show that? And, once again, we've got a solid post-Harvey bathometric survey that's three years old that'll answer your questions.
Yeah, Harvey, if I may?
Go ahead.
My background in this, uh, this industry that does satellite navigation observation, you know, that's a snapshot. If you want the real details, if you pay money, you'll get it.
We paid it, one point two million dollars for the study.
You need to look at the comprehensive data set, just a snapshot.
So, again, my point, though, is...
Why bring this up?
Why, why bring something to the table that appears to show damage that isn't the current situation?
This is to reference.
That, that's your perception? Let's, let's, let's move on, we've got the data to tell us exactly where we are. We're trying to establish a point because they're moving forward with more flows coming into Little Bay that are guaranteed to cause more damage, and we'll find out what that damage is, and the study's been done, so we'll keep moving. All we're trying to do is figure out what rate we will charge if mitigation of the sedimentation is not taken into consideration. That's my position on it. Okay?
Okay, you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Yep.
I have a question. Commissioner Wright brought up a very relevant point. David, uh, do we, Commissioner, you mentioned that you, you think that, and I, I have a good reason to believe you, I just wanna confirm that outfall eight and which other outfall or city outfalls?
Well, they're all city outfalls.
Okay, okay, all right.
And they're all on the west side of Little Bay.
Okay. I was making sure that they were all city outfalls, not a select?
Yeah.
Because that makes a difference in terms of what, if they didn't own it, quote unquote, own it or control it, that makes a difference in how you ultimately implement the cost of service rate.
I suppose that would be a valid question, depending upon the age of the drainage when it emptied into Little Bay. It could belong to the county if it wasn't in the city limits at the time. But it still is the city or the county one, they're all on the west side of Little Bay.
Anyway, once again, we've gotta start somewhere, we gotta get a baseline. Things are moving in the right direction because of our actions and our, um, the ability to control these stormwaters in the aid of navigation, and to me, it's the channels that we're really worried about, and yes, Little Bay and Seagrasses, I think it'll come once we get that done, hopefully. Um, go ahead, Mr. Bamos.
Okay. Yes, and to reiterate, this map was simply shown to identify the location of the outfalls, not to prove or disprove the quantity of location of sediment discharge. A bathometric survey is the, the best and appropriate way to determine that. Next item was the water quality testing monitoring program, which we're budgeting the study of twenty-five thousand dollars per year to monitor the pollutant load and its outfall. Dividing twenty-five thousand dollars across the entire watershed, twenty-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven acres, that comes out to be nine dollars per acre. Administrative costs, so this is a portion of the, assume the administration costs that were distributed across the Little Bay permitting program. Those administrative costs include procuring bathometric surveys, water quality monitoring permit program, uh, procurement of those services, reporting, recording, et cetera. I kinda go through some details about how that is determined, personnel costs, overhead costs, and, and assigning a portion of that, uh, labor and overhead costs to administer the Little Bay program, and I come up with a total annual cost of fifty-three thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. Uh, distributing that across the entire watershed that comes up to nineteen dollars per acre. And I work with Keith on these numbers to kinda arrive at, at how to distribute this cost. Um, roughly eight percent of the program cost to Little Bay and twenty percent to Rockport Harbor. Next is ongoing legal support, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars per year, which equates to nine dollars per acre. Next is ongoing engineering and environmental consulting, seventy-five thousand dollars per year, which equates to twenty-six dollars per acre. And then all of that is summarized in this table, so dredge costs, environmental testing and monitoring, administrative, legal, environmental and engineering consulting, for a total of three-hundred-and-sixty dollars per acre per year. And then I apply that rate to each of the eight outfalls that are shown, to show what that cost would represent in terms of an annual fee. If that fee were applied to all the outfalls, I'd give them a drainage area rate, presuming no mitigation treatment, that kind of thing, the annual fee for all the outfalls would be nine-hundred-thousand dollars per year.
Hey, buddy, have any questions? Good work, by the way. Charlie, you got any input on that?
Well, one, one question I have, David, is, uh, if the sediments in Little Bay are shown to contain contaminants that are listed by EPA as hazards, then what are we talking about in terms of cost?
Right. So. The cost to clean contaminants was not included in this rate study. And there is a lot of thought given to that because we don't have evidence of, and I'm not saying that doesn't exist, though we don't have tangible evidence of what those contaminants are, what levels they are, nor the cost to mitigate. The focus of the study was simply on sediment root. That's something tangible that we can calculate and apply to this. So, I agree, Charlie, that was left out. But it was left out intentionally because it's, didn't have enough data to work on to, to assess those costs.
This, this whole thing is a point to move forward. We've got today's problems, which falls into that. We don't know exactly what they are, but we think there are some. Our studies have shown there are some of that. And then we have the channels that are silted in. So, that's today's problem. We're finding out a place to move forward in case we can't come together on a solution.
Well, you have some sampling cost in here.
Yeah.
To determine what.
Sure.
Okay.
That can be adjusted.
Sure.
Add lots of core sample.
Yeah, yeah, well, that goes moving forward.
Oh, no.
I, I want to emphasize, as we did with the Rockport Harbor study, cost of service analysis. This is just, as you mentioned, Chair, this is a starting point. Typically, you'd come back at least every other year to reset your cost based upon actual expenditures. Now, you're, now you're counting. And then you continue to count and adjust the actual rate based on the evidence that's actually happening on the ground. This is, you know, it's an estimate. It's an estimate.
Do you have something?
No, I was going to just point out that you had a question over here.
Oh, okay.
Trying to be helpful.
Um, okay. Any other input, David?
That's all I've got.
Well, we really appreciate you acting quickly on this. Um, I think everybody's comfortable with that number and, and hopefully it will, uh, help us move forward in the future. So, thanks a lot.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, with that, we've got some things to talk about for negotiations and legal consultations. So, I move that we go into closed session. If I can call that a move.
You have to declare and read the stuff.
Got to read it, though. Closed meeting. Commission will recess this open meeting, conduct a closed session, meeting pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, conduct a private consultation with its attorney under five-five-one-oh-seven-one of the act and deliberate regarding real property, five-five-one-oh-seven-two of the act, and will deliberate regarding personnel matters under five-five-one-oh-seven-four of the act. Following closed meeting, commission will reconvene and go back into our open agenda item.
Take a five-minute break?
If you need one, let's go.
Okay, welcome back to our open session. What we're gonna go ahead and do, I'd like to see a motion to table the agenda item. Do we, can we table it in the middle of it?
No.
Or just?
Without objection, you can table it. You'll pronounce it, Chairman.
I don't even need a motion.
Without, say, I'm tabling it without objection. If a member of the commission objects, then call and vote. Otherwise it's tabled without objection.
Okay. Thank you. Without objection, I say that we table the, table the agenda item for our next meeting, which will be next Monday. No objections?
Per the, per allowing the two representatives to speak with the city.
Yeah, we're gonna continue our negotiation.
Yes.
A motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna give you adjourn.
Not necessary.
We don't care, Jack. Second.
I'll teach you something.
All in favor, aye.